Okay, so I'll open this meeting of the Douglas County Public Library Board of Trustees at 10:02. And we'll open for public comment. All written public comments that are received prior to 4:00 p.m. the day before the library board meeting will be compiled and will be added as supplemental material for the library trustees and the public to review prior to the meeting. To make public comment during the meeting, the public must call 775-783-6024 and leave a voice message which will be played for the library board of trustees and the public. Any written public comment received after 4:00 p.m. the day before the library board meeting will be compiled and added as supplemental materials to the county's website and distributed to the library board of trustees within 24 hours after the meeting. So, public comment is open at 10:03.
This is Veronica Helen. For the record, we have not received any public comment voicemails at this time.
Thank you, Veronica.
We do have written public comment that Veronica posted as supplemental material yesterday.
Could you read that, Amy? Or Veronica?
Sure. So, we've received three public comments. One was email and the other two were regular mail. The first says, "Dear Douglas County Library Board Members, My name is Carol A. Freeman and this letter is in support of the Douglas County Librarian, Amy Dodson. I'm a retired Law Enforcement Command Executive from Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department with more than 29 years of law enforcement service. I have lived in the town of Mendon within Douglas County for the past 22 years. It was my privilege to serve on a past Douglas County Grand Jury as its foreperson for one year term of its service. We made a number of recommendations to the various departments within the county to improve their departments. These recommendations were widely received by each of the departments we examined, including the Douglas County Sheriff's Department. At that time Sheriff Ron Perini met with us, provided valuable input into our final report. We made a number of recommendations regarding training and improvements in jail procedures. We appreciated the mutual respect Sheriff Perini offered to members of the Grand Jury. I share this experience as a juxtaposition to the recent situation, the current sheriff and his remarks about Ms. Dodson. As a career law enforcement executive, I find his public remarks to Ms. Dodson to be deeply concerning. As is publicly known, Sheriff Coverly disparaged Ms. Dodson by threatening to deny police emergency services to the library should such a request arise. The sheriff's comments were the result of Ms. Dodson's work with the library staff in forming a library, informing, excuse me, a library statement of diversity. The diversity statement to be formed would include those suggested by the American Library Association. It included the Black Lives Matter Organization among others. Sheriff Coverly's comments were and still are a violation of his oath of office. His public statements led to demonstrations at the sheriff's office from supporters wielding automatic long rifles who backed the sheriff and who shouted threats at those who supported the librarian's diversity position. The demonstration was clearly on Douglas County Sheriff's property with the approval of the sheriff. I have lived in Mendon for more than 20 years and have never seen such a raw display of hate and violation of public free speech. Sheriff Coverly has never apologized for his comments. He made a statement weeks later that he would respond to calls for service if the library requested it. Ms. Dodson has endured this community behavior under the example Sheriff set. Currently, Ms. Dodson faces another challenge to her professional credentials. The library board is now considering evaluating her and the appropriateness of her diversity position. What is a library and what does a librarian do? A library, at least in the United States, holds a wealth of written material. Wait a minute, sorry, new page. A wealth of written material that is protected under the Constitution of the United States, specifically the Bill of Rights. Some people might disagree with certain material in a library or even object strongly that it is even allowed in a library. That doesn't make it illegal or unconstitutional. A librarian manages a library as the caretaker of the specific material established for public consumption. Ms. Dodson has followed the professional standards of the American Library Association by her actions in developing a diversity statement. Such a statement is clearly within the responsibility and rights of any public librarian. In addition, Ms. Dodson should be recognized for her implementation of the Nevada State COVID Plan for libraries that made possible our communities' access to library materials during these recent difficult times. I strongly suggest that in evaluating Ms. Dodson, the library board consider those standards at the national library level. Respectfully submitted, Carol A. Freeman." So, that's the end of the first public comment. The second is an email from Virginia Starrett. And it says, "It is good to see the library board updating policies that definitely need to be brought current. I am however puzzled at the wording in the suggested mission statement update. This new statement seems to be making the claim that the library's quote qualified staff unquote actually provides the bookshelves, equipment, building, etc. I'm sure that is not what was intended, yet that is how those words put together as they are would be most naturally interpreted. Below is my suggestion for how the wording could be clarified." And first she says, or she states the current mission statement, which is, "The mission of the Douglas County Public Library is to have qualified staff provide a comprehensive collection of library materials, services, and programs to meet the informational, educational, recreational, and cultural needs of all residents of Douglas County." And then she states, "My suggested revision. The mission of the Douglas County Public Library is to have qualified staff provide a comprehensive," oh, she took that part out, I'm sorry. "The mission of the Douglas County Public Library is to provide a comprehensive collection of library materials, services, and programs as well as qualified staff in order to meet the informational, educational, recreational, and cultural needs of all residents of Douglas County." She then states, "It is not the staff that provides the canables. Staff may oversee or supervise, but the library materials, services, and programs come from a budget and other funding sources outside and apart from the library staff. Signed, Virginia Starrett." So, that's the end of public comment number two. And the third and final written public comment is from Arlene Zedler or Zeidler, I'm not sure. It says, "Dear Douglas County Board Members, This letter is in support of Amy Dodson. I am Arlene Zedler, a Mendon resident for over 20 years. I wrote a letter to the editor for the Record Carrier on August 6, 2020, on behalf of Ms. Dodson and her outstanding performance as our librarian. A copy of this letter is enclosed. The American Library Association recommended along with the statement of diversity to include support of Black Lives Matter. It appears that Ms. Dodson was beginning to form an agenda with her library staff to form and encourage procedures that reflected the urgency of recent news about how people of color and minorities are treated particularly with the very recent occurrence of the death of George Floyd and the appropriate response by the Black Lives Matter Organization. Ms. Dodson was beginning to form an agenda for her staff meeting to decide how to reinforce a statement of diversity inclusion which libraries across the nation all have. Part of that agenda included possible support of Black Lives Matter. Therefore, the unprofessional response of Sheriff Coverly was not only in violation of his office but set up a division and us and them message to our community. The example of this was the demonstration in front of the sheriff's office from those that backed the sheriff and brought their automatic rifles as if they were the militia. Other demonstrators were there to support Ms. Dodson and the integrity she brings to her profession. Instead of uniting the community, our sheriff further divided it. Ms. Dodson deserves an apology from Sheriff Coverly's unprofessional behavior. She also deserves to keep her job and continues to represent our public library as the welcoming institution it has always been. Thank you for reading this letter. I appreciate your efforts on our library board. Sincerely, Arlene Zedler." And then she has attached, as she said, a copy of her letter to the editor from August 6. I don't think I need to read that again since it's published already. Okay. And that's the final written public comment that we received before four o'clock yesterday.
Okay, and Veronica, it's 10:13 now. Were there any other public comments? You're muted. You're muted.
There were no other public comments.
Okay, so we'll close public comment at 10:13 and move on to the agenda. Item number two for possible action, discussion on approval of the proposed agenda. The library board of trustees reserves the right to take items out of order, to combine two or more agenda items for consideration, and to remove items from the agenda at any time. All items designated for possible action shall include a discussion by the library board of trustees, and they may take appropriate action to approve, modify, deny, take no action, or continue the item.
I move approval of the agenda.
I second.
And we have a motion in a sec, a motion in a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor? Aye.
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 Okay. So, the motion carries. The agenda is approved. We'll move on to item number three for possible action, discussion on the approval of the minutes of the October 27, 2020 regular meeting. And I had one correction on page four, under the detention facilities, the first paragraph. It is China Spring. It does not have an S on it.
Well, could I make, and I make another change in that same sentence, is constantly changing its list of appropriate instead of there.
And then in the second bullet point, the apostrophe needs to remove before the S in China Springs because it's possessive of their form. Any other corrections? And Veronica, did you get those? Okay, you're muted.
Yes, I got those. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, does anybody want to make a motion to approve the minutes with those corrections?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes with those corrections.
Second.
And that was Heather?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. The minutes are approved. Moving on to agenda item number four, the consent calendar. Items appearing on the consent calendar are items that can be adopted with one motion unless pulled by a trustee wishing to have an item or items further discussed. When items are pulled for discussion, they will be automatically placed on the next item for discussion or may be continued until another meeting. For possible action, approval of the gift funds claim.
I move approval of the consent calendar.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the consent calendar. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? See, that motion carries. Item number five for possible action, discussion and review of budget performance report summary and the gift fund summary.
The first page of this item's documents is the monthly summary of expenditures, which shows we're still under budget in every category. In services and supplies, we're at a 31% of our budget, which is really outstanding considering how small our budget has been this year. And so, right now, we're overall at 33% and we're almost halfway through the fiscal year. There's nothing outstanding or significant. All of our expenses have been routine and, and/or related to COVID, which will be reimbursed. Are there any questions about specific items on the budget report?
Well, my only question, Amy, is a couple of the items are very high in their percentage of the amount already used. Is that something that we're going to have to transfer funds into those line items?
Ideally, yes. The next agenda item is about the opening fund balance, so we'll be able to replenish those funds. For example, the small amount that we've spent in programs shows a negative 100% because that particular line had a zero budget for this year, but we did have some small expenses in that category. But just as a reminder, at the end of the fiscal year, as long as each category balances to zero, we're not considered over budget. So, one line item may be larger than another, but they all come out in the wash at the end. And we're not required to bring each line item to a balance of zero, just the major categories, those being salaries, benefits, and services and supplies.
Amy, I had a question about the small equipment of $8,800.
Okay, let me see.
It's down near the bottom.
Oh, I see. That was probably for equipment for working during closures, but I don't remember off the top of my head what that's for. Veronica, do you remember what that line is?
I don't remember what that line item is for.
But I believe that was for office equipment that we've needed to operate when we're closed, but I'll double check that and email it to you after the meeting.
Okay, because it was for COVID-related expenses, we'd be reimbursed for that one.
Yes, we would.
Okay, if you'll let us know that then.
I sure will.
So, any other questions or discussion on the budget review? Okay, seeing them, we'll move on to agenda item number six for possible action, discussing and possible action on the fiscal year 2021 adjusted opening fund balance, providing direction to the library director on distribution of funds. Amy?
Thank you. This is the best part of the meeting today. As a reminder, at the end of every fiscal year, the county undergoes an audit by an outside auditor. Once that audit is complete, they have the actual tax revenues, our actual balances, and anything left over at the end of the fiscal year. That is all compiled into what's called the adjusted opening fund balance. So, this year, because we have been very frugal with our budget, we had a lot of leftover funds at the end of the last fiscal year, plus our tax revenues were higher than anticipated, which is fantastic. And so, all in all, we will be adding $338,094 to our account. It is only available once per year, as I said, at the end of the audit process, so we usually do get it in the fall. And it can only be spent on one-time expenses. That doesn't mean that we have to spend the whole $300,000 at one time, but it means we cannot use it for salaries and wages or for any long-term ongoing expense. It can only be used for things like furniture, technology, or books, or any number of things that we need to fund, but we just can't use it for salaries and benefits. So, as I said, this $338,000 reflects what was left over from the last fiscal year because we were frugal in our spending, and it represents tax revenue that was above what was anticipated. We also left, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Amy.
Oh, well, we left the room tax fund because we're now in our own fund, and, and we're actually very fortunate to have done that at this time because without that, we would have had a much smaller amount.
Has this money actually been put into our budget?
No, not yet. I think the finance department does them all at the same time. They did say on Friday they'll be sending out a form for us to fill out, to outline how we're going to spend it, and they'll only give us a couple of weeks to submit that. So, this agenda item is to discuss what some of the possible uses could be. We don't have to have it down to the penny right now. We can discuss it again at the next meeting. But I did make some recommendations as to how some of that could be used, and that's probably the second page of your attachment. And it says it's been item number six at the top. So, what I've done is I've filled in all the gaps of where we were missing some funding this year, because as we know, our budget was very small compared to past years. So, I have filled in those gaps so that those line items can be fully utilized. And I did not add anything for programs because we don't know when programs will start again. But when that time comes, we can always transfer some money into that line. But I did add some expenses that I think are realistic for the rest of the fiscal year, and that even with all of my recommendations, that still leaves $167,380 recommended. And so, we would then still have $170,714 left to allocate.
And again, Amy, what's the deadline on this decision?
Well, the CFO has not given us a deadline. She just mentioned on Friday that she would be sending out forms this week or maybe right up for Thanksgiving, and then they would give us about two weeks to turn that in. But we can make the final decision at our next meeting, December 15, and I think that would be acceptable, but she has not given a firm deadline yet.
Well, I have.
One more question. This is Mark Jensen. What happens if we don't allocate all the funds? Do the library loses those funds?
No, but we do have to spend them by the end of the fiscal year. So, we could put the rest of it in small projects or any other line that we like and then move it around later in the fiscal year. So, it's not 100% final. We all know it's going to be in services and supplies. So, we can still make transfers throughout the fiscal year.
Well, this is Bonnie Rogers. I did check some things I have questions about. The first is the computer system. Does that include the new request you're asking for the, I don't know what it is, but the, the company to supply the technical support?
Oh.
That's one question.
Okay, go ahead.
The phones, is this because of the new system where the cost has increased?
No, that project was paid for out of other funds, so it's not the new phone system. It is, however, it reflects the service, the phone lines, and then the old lines that we have for faxes and alarms. We're still saving, though, about $2,000 in cost allocations by getting our own phone system, so that savings will be reflected later on down the road. So, that was another line that I had cut down, and then we added, you know, what we think it'll be for the rest of the year.
And then we go down to tech-wise, the small equipment maintenance, that's gone up $1,500, and, and I just questioned if some of these are not overlapping expenses. And then, okay, I see where you put it in books. An internet data line, that's still $4,100, but that doesn't go back up to the other one you told us before. But rather than doing staff memberships, what if we put $1,000 into programs?
Okay.
I hope we can do something.
Okay.
I think it's important that we try to show the community, we are trying to do some programs and some efforts if we can.
Okay.
And then I'll beat my dead horse to death. I would like to see some funds put towards the bookmobile so that we could try to get that up and running, because I know they still have only two, two people or one person per vehicle or two.
It's still one person per vehicle, so.
But because of the size of that vehicle, I'm wondering if maybe we could take it to IRC or something and have them give us recommendations where we'd fit with county policy, but that we could possibly get that out and moving, because I think that's a real important piece for what we're going through in the community.
Yeah, I agree. Well, we can make that decision without IRC. That's up to the library board.
We can make a decision about one or two passengers?
Right now, we're supposed to only have one person in a vehicle at a time, because you can't really get a good social distance inside a car or a truck or a bookmobile. It's just too close quarters and no ventilation, so we're asked not to put any more than one person in a vehicle.
But we could operate the bookmobile with one person.
It's, it's not advisable for safety reasons, and it really does take two people to run a bookmobile stop.
And so, I'm sorry, Carrie Ross with the District Attorney's Office, we've kind of veered a little bit off of the budget conversation, I think, with this particular detail, so maybe if we can get back to that at another item, I don't know if there's a more appropriate agenda item or else on a, on the next agenda, we can add something.
Okay, that's fine with me.
This is Mark Jensen. It seems that maybe Amy could, maybe the bookmobile should be a specific topic on the next month's agenda about its status and anyway we can get it going again.
Okay. However, if you did want to move some funds into the gas and oil line, which is for the bookmobile, you could suggest that at this point. That's perfectly okay.
Can you remind me what it used to be, the budget that the bookmobile had per year?
It, it was approximately $4,000 for oil and, and fuel. And then the maintenance was about $3,000 a year for its scheduled maintenance.
Well, maybe if we put in $3,000.
Okay.
Just in case we get to be up and running. Does that make sense?
So, we can add, if I've heard things correctly, $1,000 to programs and $3,000 to gas and oil, which is for the bookmobile?
Sounds good.
Now, for the rest of the balance, I met with staff and came up with several good ideas of things that we need that we could use the money for, including new carpet, new shelving. new carpet, new shelving, some new furniture. Carpet and shelving are pretty high on the list. And also an awning or a cover over the book drop that's outside. We're running into some issues with opening and closing the book drop when there's snow and ice. Sometimes the locks on those doors will freeze or the doors will freeze and we can't get them open. So if that was covered and, and not letting in any snow or rain, that would be a really great thing. So that was another thing that was suggested. There were lots of suggestions, of course, but most of them were carpet shelving remodeling type things.
And would you bring us amounts on those so we have an idea?
Yes, yes. I just wanted to get it out there. But yes, I can bring those to the next meeting.
Perfect.
This is Mark Jensen. Yeah, I would like to see those suggestions as well as dollar amounts. Improvements inside the library seem to be something that that money would be useful for now. Also, I want to go back to the memberships line. Trusty Rogers had brought that up. Are we still leaving that thousand dollars there?
That's up to you. Since we have such a large balance, we could leave that money there and still put a thousand dollars in programs.
I think that would be an excellent use of that money.
Okay. Noted.
Well, I mean, with the others, I'd like to say a list of suggestions and the, the cost for doing it. Because I, I think some of those things are needed, but I also think our operations budget needs to go back to where it was as much as possible. So we need to look at both of them in that respect.
Okay. The recommendations that I made in that third column reflect mostly what would make us whole again since the budget cuts and, and bring us back to a more normal level. At this time, you have the option to vote to approve the suggestions that I've provided and that were discussed today. Or you could make no decision and decide at the next meeting for everything in one fell swoop. Or really any combination of those two.
Well, Bonnie Rogers, again, I'd like to see us do it one time. See the whole list together for the augmentation budget and things that we could know what we're approving at one time.
Okay, any further discussion on this item? So we'll bring it back on the December agenda with all these suggestions and then possible costs for the other items and see if we can add those into it at that time.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, then we'll move on to agenda item number seven for possible action. Discussion and possible approval of the CARES Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act grant and the amount of eight thousand seventy-four dollars administered through the state library. Funding is specifically targeted to purchase internet accessible devices for local students.
Okay, so this is a grant that I mentioned earlier in the fiscal year. The CARES Act provides money to local government as well as libraries and other organizations. So I just want to avoid confusion a little bit. There's CARES Act funds that the county has to use for coronavirus-related expenses such as, you know, sanitizing and plexiglass barriers and things like that. This grant that we're going to talk about right now is completely separate from that, is specific for libraries. And so it is administered through the state library, much like some of our other grants. So there are only two options of things that we can buy with this money. Because it's required that it is filtered for CIPA requirements, and that stands for Child Internet Protection Act. And so these devices have to be filtered. The only ones that you can buy pre-filtered are hotspots. And hotspots are a portable internet Wi-Fi connection that anybody can use. And then the laptops or Chromebooks are for distance learning, obviously. And so I got two quotes for the devices that we would need. And I'm pretty certain of which one is going to be the better quote, but I'm presenting them both to you here today. One of them is from a company called Kadite. And they have minimum purchases, so we could only purchase a minimum of twenty hotspots and ten laptops. The total for all of that would equal roughly sixteen thousand dollars, which is much higher than the grant. But that's what the cost is that they gave me, and that includes a year of service. And we get to keep the devices at the end of that year. So we could use them for whatever we want a year later. The only thing we'd have to pay for is continued service, like Wi-Fi service. The other quote is from Sprint T-Mobile. They're all one company now. They do not have a minimum. We can purchase whatever quantity we like. If we were to get ten laptops and twelve hotspots, that would equal eight thousand seventy dollars. So four dollars under the grant. It doesn't include tax and stuff, but you know, still, it's right there at the level of the grant. And so the cool thing about their laptops is that they have a hotspot inside them. So for instance, if a student checks out the laptop and takes it home, all of the people in that family could use that as a hotspot. So if they don't have internet at home or if their internet is very slow, they, several devices can hook up to that hotspot, and I think that's pretty handy. And we would be able to keep the equipment at the end of the year and do whatever we like with it. And that, again, is one year of service as well. And both of, both of the quotes include unlimited service, so there's no cap on how much they can use these, you know, while they're checked out. So it's not limited in time or data gigabytes. So this, and go ahead.
I was just gonna say, and you say the library keeps them at the end of the year's contract, they'll still have the filter system on it at that time?
No, it would, well, we would have to get service that's filtered for them, which is what we're doing now. So the filtering isn't taking place right there on the device, but it's on the Wi-Fi network that we're paying the service for. So if, for instance, we wanted to add more hotspots later on and use the same service, then they would also be filtered.
Okay.
This is one of those grants that we're getting the money anyway. It's not that we have the choice to say yes or no. It's just, it would be unadvisable to turn down the grant. But it can only be used for these two things. So it's pretty much a done deal, so to speak. It's not like we have to wait for a decision from them after our application is complete. We simply have to decide how many devices and how many, and which service to go with, excuse me. And one more option, with the adjusted opening fund balance, we could get more devices above the amount of the grant and pay the difference ourselves. So for instance, if the board said we should get twenty laptops instead of ten, then that would put us about five thousand dollars over the amount of the grant, but we could pay for that ourselves.
This is Mark Jensen. Amy, I was wondering the same thing, if you knew whether the community need, need was going to be met by that first group of laptops or if something more was needed. Do you have any information on that?
A little bit. Students already get Chromebooks through the school. But this would be a nice supplement for people who are homeschooled. College-level distance learning, because pretty much all colleges are on distance learning right now. Any kind of professional education or certification program that's done from home. It's specifically for education, but it's not limited to an age or a type of school. And then, of course, it would also be good if, like, let's say a student had a Chromebook and it died or it had a technical problem, they could come to the library and get one of ours and continue their schoolwork.
Amy, do we have any computers we check out now?
No, we don't. We have a couple of tablets, an iPad, and a Galaxy. We've had those for a long time, though. They're kind of at the end of their life.
High demand.
Not right now, no. But we don't have very many, so that's probably why.
Well, I think for fiscal responsibility, the grant is for eight thousand and seventy-four dollars. So if we can get Sprint, which gives us the hotspot and we can keep it, we would be within the money we're receiving for the grant.
That's correct.
That would be my recommendation.
You know, we might want to wait and, I mean, do it with, do it the grant would, would pay for. But, and then see the demand. And then later on, use some money to, to add to that because I know with distance learning with my grandkids, you know, having a computer and all that stuff is extremely important right now. But we could find out if it would be, which, which thing would be more beneficial to add more.
Okay. And Sprint would allow us to do that since they don't have a minimum purchase. We can always buy more, you know, a few months from now or whatever.
So does somebody want to make a motion to go with the Sprint T-Mobile? The tw- ten, ten laptops and twelve hotspots?
I'll make a motion, Jill Harper, for the print mobile, ten computers and ten hotspots. Is that right?
It's twelve.
Twelve?
Twelve. Twelve hotspots, sorry.
Would that include then also, Jill, our acceptance of the grant, even though we're going to get it anyway?
Yes, I would think so.
Yeah, okay.
Hold on, I'll second that. Okay, so we have a motion to accept the grant and purchase the ten laptops and twelve hotspots using the Sprint T-Mobile service. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries.
Thank you.
We'll move on to agenda item number eight for possible action. Discussion and possible approval of the annual state library correction develop, collection development allocation of seven thousand three hundred and eighty-six dollars for the fiscal year 2021. Documents from the state library state a requirement that the funding can be used for the purchase of books, library materials, and computer databases. The money granted cannot supplant nor cause to be reduced any other funding source for the public library.
Thank you, Kate. This is another grant that we're going to get it anyway. We simply have to submit, you know, the application and the paperwork. And so this is something that the board approves every year. This time, our allocation is seven thousand three hundred and eighty-six dollars. In the past, it has ranged from five thousand to eleven thousand. It all depends on what the state legislature decides. And so, and it's based on the size of our community and our number of patrons and, and other things. So that money would be spent primarily on eBooks and other downloadable materials because they're in huge demand right now.
Well, I'll move approval acceptance of the library collection grant.
Okay, we motion in a second for approval of the state library correction development grant. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Moving on to agenda item number nine for possible action. Discussion and possible approval of a contract for technology services provided by, oh, sorry, Digital Technology Solutions, DTS, for the period of November 2020 through November 2022 in the amount of eighteen thousand seven hundred and thirty-two dollars per year, not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars per year.
Okay. Contract on the screen, again, if you like. This is a contract that we have already had with them for one year, and it's just time to do another one. Carrie Ross has looked at the contract and, and approved it. It was also looked over by Cynthia Gregory when she was our DDA. So this contract has been through two legal checks, so it must be good. So this would be the period of whatever date in November we decide for two years. I've discussed this contract also with Patrick Yates to make sure that it meets all the requirements, even though they don't meet our decisions. Just in terms of what the county will approve, because the county does have to approve this because it's the contract. But the library board has to approve it first. So Patrick, it stated that he was comfortable with the two-year contract as long as it was something that met our needs. So when I talked to Digital Technology Solutions, I asked them if they would keep our current rate of service per month the same, and they did, and they were willing to lock that in for two years. So I thought that was a really great opportunity for us, and I'm very grateful for them doing that. The only thing different this time than the first contract with them is a new expense that we have for our servers. It's a server maintenance software, so we've added that amount. It's not very much. And so it's about, came out to about fifteen hundred a month, which would equal eighteen thousand seven hundred and thirty-two dollars per year, not to exceed twenty-five thousand.
Is that included in your increase of the technology funds I have to find?
Yes, yes, it is. They provide a lot of service to us, just in case you're wondering. Because we do have Larry Wilson, our IT coordinator, but there are things that are above and beyond his job description that can only be handled by an outsourced company. For many years, we used JFG as our technology company, but their prices were getting too high for us, and we enlisted DTS, and they've been fantastic. And they're really good at keeping our costs down. You know, when they make recommendations for equipment or changes or whatever, they're very mindful of our budget, and I appreciate that. We've, we've been extremely happy with their service.
And you've had it for the one year so far, correct?
Correct.
Where are they located, Amy?
Across from the high school in the office complex.
At where?
Across from the high school.
Oh, they're here local.
Oh, yeah, they're around the corner.
That's nice.
Yeah. If you like.
Any other discussion?
Well, I just remembered, if you want a price comparison, the last time we were up for a new contract with JFG, our former company, it was up to forty thousand dollars per year. So there's a big savings.
I move, this is Mark Jensen, I move that we approve the contract for technology services with DTS for the period November 2020 through November 22, in the amount of eighteen thousand seven hundred and thirty-two dollars per year.
And I'll second that. Okay, motion in a second to approve the contract. All those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. We'll move on to agenda item number ten for possible action. Discussion and possible approval of revisions to update the library policies listed below. Policy revisions are needed to accurately reflect current technology facilities and professional practices. The following policies will be discussed. Do we want to just do them individually, Amy, here?
Yes, absolutely. So last month, we decided there would be ten or twelve policies that would be revised. And we decided to split them up into two meetings, so we're doing six today, and we'll do another six or five, whichever it is, in December. And so I have written my first run of revisions, which are in red on those documents for you to discuss and possibly change today. You, you're not obligated to approve any of them at this time. We can certainly bring them back to future meetings. But this at least gets the process. We can certainly bring them back to future meetings, uh, but this at least gets the process started.
Okay, so we'll start with animals in the library policy.
Okay. Any questions, comments on the revisions?
It seems this one's pretty straightforward in that the, uh, editing, the revisions are appropriate, so I move we, uh, approve the revisions of this policy as presented.
I second. I'll hear Roger.
Motion, motion in a second to approve the animals in the library policy update. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. We'll move on to computer and internet use.
Okay, uh, these are in alphabetical order, so in case you're wondering why we're doing them in this order. Um, so the computer policy is really old, uh, the one that we had in place and it's quite long because I've made a lot of changes. Part of it was just to clean up the language and bring things a little more current and, um, take out things like floppy disk, things that are way outdated. And I removed the section on email because there's a separate policy for email, which is coming up in a minute. And then I took out some other things that I thought were just not necessary or were repetitive.
I had some questions. I, I'm trying to figure out now why I had. On the first page, under acceptable use, the third paragraph down, library staff is available assist, to assist patrons, et cetera. That was taken from someplace else in the policy?
Yeah, I just moved it.
Okay, I guess. Then on the page two says children under the age of eight. Use by minors must be accompanied to use the public. Uh, did you select the age of eight or why is eight the arbitrary, uh, age?
No, I didn't select that. That was in the existing policy, uh, but we could certainly change it.
I don't know what's appropriate age. Age, uh, eight things. I know two-year-olds can use it, but, um, must be accompanied. I don't know what.
Okay, well, the only thing that, um, I can think of is that the age of eight is used, um, in other policies about parents accompanying children. Um, we ask that they don't leave children under the age of eight alone in the library. Um, and again, that was decided a long time ago, but I, I think it's appropriate. Um, but we can certainly change it, uh, to any age the board thinks is right.
What, where are you seeing it, Bonnie? I'm having a hard time finding it.
It's at the very bottom of page two.
Page two, in use by minor. Well, what do we consider a minor, I guess, is first. Is it twelve and under or ten and under or what? What is the legal definition of minor?
Under sixteen, I believe.
Well, look, Carrie, what do you say, Carrie? I thought it was under eighteen, but.
Well, that's a little old.
I also thought it was eighteen technically, if we're using just a normal definition.
But that's, I mean, they know more than we do, so I guess eight's okay. I just thought it was a little young. And what about ten? I don't know. I'm just asking questions because I was curious.
I think ten is good, but, um, I'm not, I'm not an expert.
Eight is a second grader and they're all using the computers at school, so they are quite familiar with them.
And they know everything, more than we do, so I guess it's okay. I was curious. Then on page three, under time limits. I found that confusing. Time limits are enforced on the workstations.
Public computer workstations. It's hard to read.
Okay, public computer workstation. Patrons may use, and then it goes to express internet commuters, computer stations with the fifteen minutes. I think that needs some work for clarity.
Okay. Because, oh, sorry.
It just patrons may use
The.
And then it.
It, it's supposed to say patrons may use the express internet computer stations with a fifteen-minute time limit.
Okay, so we don't have a time limit on other workstations.
No, we do, um, but that's, uh, run by the software that runs those, and I believe it's a two-hour time limit.
Okay, well, it's just a question ahead because I found it confusing and.
Okay, I can clear it up.
And then, uh, on page, what was that? I guess that's page two. I skipped a page. I had to go back and forth. The paragraph, not representing oneself as another or.
Where is that?
On page two, the first paragraph down, not representing oneself as another user, not attempting to modify or gain access files. I don't know, that, that's not a sentence, I don't think, but.
Yeah, I agree.
I was just trying to figure it out. And then, um, you know me and my grammar somewhere in the, uh, the bottom page down there. Um, also, that's under, where is it? I can't find them all now. Anyway, there's a plural use of there or. It doesn't need to be, so I have to find it again. And I had another question. Are we still doing word processing machines?
Yes, actually, we are.
They are? Okay. Okay, those were my questions, Anna.
Okay.
I'll have to find it there.
Okay, so, um, the top of page two, you said, and I just want to make sure my notes are right. Um, so the top of page two, and then, um, the middle of page three about time limits.
Yeah.
And was there another one?
No, that's all right now.
That's it? Okay.
Um, I had a question on page four.
Okay.
And it has to do with, um, the wireless access to the internet, um, where we say patrons are encouraged to utilize their own battery power. A limited number of electrical connections are available. Um, so that's my, uh, that was my first highlight, and I wondered, um, if we really want to make, i- it sounds like it's our policy to make a limited number of electrical outlets available, when I would hope that, you know, as resources allow and as time, you know, as we go forward, that, um, we would not seek to have a limited number of, um, electrical connections, but, you know, to, that's not our goal, to have a limited number, you know.
I got you.
It wouldn't be our policy, I wouldn't think. Um, perhaps our constraints at the moment, you know, are that we do have. So, um, I just don't know if it really belongs in a policy because my, on my wish list would be, we have a lot more electrical outlets. So, you know, so, um, I'm not quite sure how to deal with that, but it didn't, it, I didn't feel like it should be baked in kind of as a policy.
Okay.
Um, it's, it's more like helpful advice, you know, given where we are at the moment.
Hmm. Well, we could eliminate that sentence. Oh, sorry, Mark, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, just end the sentence right after battery power where the some of.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, that, that would I get, that would do it, yeah.
Okay.
Because that's an encouragement, not, you know, exactly.
Right.
And then, um, secondly, it's with the, what, just following on on it, says patrons are to navigate wireless connectivity without staff assistance. Um, and I just wanted you to maybe talk a little bit about what, if any, staff assistance we provide to people who, you know, who need it and come to the desk and say, you know, I, it, do we just say it's not our policy to provide assistance or, um, you know, I understand, I, I think I understand where this is going in that you don't, this isn't, you know, an Apple Help Store, you know, a Genius Desk. That's what, not what our librarians are for. On the other hand, we've just changed our mission statement to, uh, talk and highlight about our qualified staff. And in this day and age, to what extent do, you know, basic, you know, Q and A, FAQ type of assistance, you know, um, fall under the bailiwick of someone, you know, staffing a library desk? So I just thought maybe you could talk a little bit about that and I just wouldn't have it be inconsistent with our mission statement. So, do you see where I'm going with that and just?
Yes.
Yeah.
I do. Um, and what page was that again?
That's still on page four. It's like the next.
Oh, there it is.
After the, the one we just talked about.
Mm-hmm, gotcha.
And, oh.
Go ahead.
I was, I was just gonna say, Amy, could you just have it that patrons are encouraged to utilize their own battery power and navigate the wireless connectivity on their own? And so it's just an encouragement, not thinking staff won't help them.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
And maybe this isn't the right moment and it needs to be put on agenda for the next time, but I would just be curious to learn a little bit more, uh, again, about what is the scope of assistance to these, um, to this patron internet usage that the staff feels comfortable with, without saying, you know, I'm, I'm just sorry I can't help you with that. Um, so
Right.
It's a little more of a backrounder on kind of where they are currently. And is it where we want them to be or do we, you know, especially now we're gonna be talking about planning going forward and, and that was something in our strategic plan, you know, and now going forward, so I don't mean to take us off to the side, but perhaps this needs, could be an agenda item, if not in December and January to talk about.
Okay. Got it.
This is Mark Jensen. Amy, where is this posted for patrons? Is it just on a notice board or is there more than that?
Actually, it's, it's available online. Um, we give it to people when they ask, but we don't have it posted on the wall. We rarely have to e- e- even discuss it with patrons because we don't usually have problems arise. Um, so it's one of those things that's kind of as needed. Um, for instance, if someone's, you know, having difficulty with something on the computer and, and we're unable to help them, you know, at what level that they need and they become angry about it, then we can say, here is our policy. Um, but it's not something that we posted on the wall. We certainly could come up with something to post.
Amy, on page two again, I think I found what was causing me concern. On the first two paragraphs, they're the same thing. So it starts not representing oneself and then.
Oh.
Heaven to.
Oh, yeah, that's because I moved, the red part is what I moved, um, from another, from up above. So I was just, I was just rearranging those paragraphs. But I, I do think it needs to be cleaned up a little bit, so I'll work on that.
So maybe we should just clean up this policy before we act on.
Okay.
So we'll bring this one back at the December meeting with the chain, Amy?
Yes.
Is that good, Bonnie?
Yes, that's fine.
And Jill?
Yes.
Okay, and Heather, that's good with you to bring back this one for changes in December?
Fine with me, yep.
Okay, then we'll move on to C, electric, electronic mail policy.
Okay, uh, some of the language that I added, I took from the county's email policy. And I, again, just updated some of the language so that it reflects our, our current system. This is mostly a policy for staff, by the way. We should probably figure that out by reading it, but anyway, this is something that's for the staff, not the public. Is everyone hearing that?
Yes.
Okay, I don't know what it is.
Hearing what?
Someone talking? Weird. Any questions about the email policy?
No.
Nope.
Nope.
Oh.
Do you want to approve this one with the corrections?
I move to approve the electronic mail policy.
Second, Heather? I have a motion in a second to approve the electronic mail update to the policy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that one carries. Moving on to D, library user suggestions and grievance policy. And the only thing I had on this one, Amy, is to possibly include the, um, trustee email, the one that goes to the entire board.
Okay, I had put that on the email policy, sorry. Um, but yeah, I can add that.
That's a good idea, so.
So, let's see. I'll put that before the last paragraph, no, in the last paragraph.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay, got it. Okay, I can fix that and bring it back.
Amy, why did, why did you take out to meet with the library director to discuss their concerns?
Um, because that's not, I guess I thought it was a little, um, redundant because it says that the director will attempt to reach common ground and resolve the issue. But I can put it back in.
Well, I think it needs, uh, they have steps. They have suggestion box and they fill out the form. And again, I use an example from the past. We did have a complaint and, um, it was referred to the library director and then it was resolved without it coming to the board. And, but they knew that, the staff knew that they could refer the person to the director.
Okay.
So I think it's just a handy thing that the public would say, okay, I can meet with the director if I want to.
Okay, I can put that back in, no problem.
I, I disagree. This is Mark Jensen. I think that Amy should have better control of her time and who she devotes that energy to and use her discretion as to whether a complaining patron's, uh, concern rises to the level of a meeting. I think we all agree that, uh, Amy would certainly meet with someone if that was needed, but to require it in a policy, I think is an overreach. I think that the steps that the director will attempt to reach common ground and resolve the issue and that the director would use her discretion as to whether a meeting is required.
I agree. Okay, let me ask you a question because it says may submit a request for reconsideration form. What does that form say there?
Um, the, that is, that's specifically targeted to library materials, so if they object to a book being on the shelf, then they would use that, um, request for reconsideration.
And who does that go to then, Amy?
That goes directly to me.
Okay, so you get that and you decide at that point if you'll meet with them or not?
Right, and, and whether or not, um, usually what I do is I contact the patron, um, discuss their concerns, tell them that they can take this to the library board if they so choose and explain how that happens. Um, and usually nine times out of 10, they're happy with whatever that discussion came to. Um, and, and usually I explain, you know, what our policy is on collection development and things like that. So a lot of times I can resolve those things with a phone call. I do meet with them in person if they like. Um, and as I said, I explain what the next steps are if they'd like to go to the library board. And no one has in the last six years, um, asked to go to the library board with a complaint like that.
Well, that's why I say during the past, uh, a couple of people did come directly to the board. And, uh, then we referred, the board referred them back to the library director where it was resolved.
Okay.
Well, then maybe put some verbiage in there that it, uh, the first course of action is to contact the library director to resolve any issues. And then what it says there, if it's not resolved, then they could go to the board.
Yeah. Something like that. So they know they're welcome to talk to the library director.
Okay. Okay, I will do that and bring it back next time.
Okay.
Okay, so that one will come back in December. So we'll move on to item E, which is patron conduct policy.
Didn't change too much. I just wanted to, um, innovate the language a little bit. And, and the previous policy was kind of clumsy, the way they listed what's allowed and what's not allowed. And I tried to make all that agree with each other. Um, but there are a lot of things that did not need to be changed, um, such as the policy on unattended children or, um, what happens if a policy is violated and things like that. So most of these changes are pretty small.
I have a question about food. Like, why is food? You know, I don't, why, why do we have food in libraries? Outside of, outside of, say, a program that may be a movie night where, you know, you, or for kids, et cetera, but as a general policy, like, why would we have food?
Um, well, a lot of it is based on, um, the way patrons have changed and evolved over the years. Um, years ago, no libraries allowed food or drink at all. Um, but we've come to understand that it's very difficult to enforce. Um, and also, you know, people are gonna walk in with their coffee or whatever. And trying to stop them is, is sort of a, a negative PR issue. Um, and it's such a small problem that libraries have kind of decided that it's not worth, you know, um, trying to enforce something that's just another kind of a negative message, if you will. Uh, and, and as I said, it's really difficult to enforce. If somebody walks in with their coffee and we tell them no, they might just leave, you know, or feel like they're being slapped on the hand.
I can see, um, like, lidded drinks, but food? I mean, we have picnic tables right outside the door. If people, if somebody wants to sit down and open up like a, you know, a submarine sandwich or something, you know, and, and look through a book, it's just, uh, it, I don't know.
Well, I can tell you, it really hasn't caused a problem. We haven't had any major issues with food or beverage.
Okay.
So that's good.
It is good, yes.
One thing about, this is Mark Jensen, one thing about food and beverage policies is that they also have to accommodate the staff's needs. Staff who are there eight hours a day, maybe having coffee at their desk, maybe having a snack. And so it seems you have to have a standard that fits for
That's a good point.
Are people that are diabetic and need to have snacks on them?
Hmm, that's true, too. And then, of course, there's, you know, baby bottles and, you know, things like that.
Okay, I guess I'm just old school and I, you've answered my question, so.
Okay.
This is kind of a, a lot of, but on the shirts and shoes, do, is that a problem? I, I mean, I approve of, but do we check to see they're wearing shoes? And, uh, shirts obvious, but.
Um, we don't get very many shirtless people. Uh, yeah, I, I don't think it's been a problem. Only ones I see not wearing shoes are toddlers.
Okay, I just was
Yeah, and, and we do actually help parents gently that their children should be wearing shoes because, you know, the whole community walks on the floors. But, but no, we don't really have a problem.
Okay.
Okay, any further discussion on this one? Then I'll make a motion that we go ahead and approve this one with the changes that are outlined.
Mark Jensen, second.
Yeah. Wait, what are the changes? Oh, my change.
The one, the one you did.
Sorry.
I hope you know what they are.
No, I know, sorry, I was thinking of the other one. Okay.
Now you There's a motion and a second to approve this policy with the changes Amy put in place. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that one carries. And number, or letter F, policy on cooperation with other libraries and agencies.
This one's pretty boilerplate. I, I didn't make any big changes. Um, obviously, we cooperate with other libraries. Um, it's kind of something that might, doesn't even need to be written down. Uh, there is a requirement from the state library that we have a policy like this so that we do cooperate with other libraries for things like interlibrary loan and, um, you know, partnerships in the community and things like that. So, um, it's, it's something that we need to have written down, but it doesn't need updates very often.
Amy, does this include, I can't remember the name of it, the, uh, the cooperative library, the group that we left a couple of years ago, a few years ago?
No, no, this is not part of the Nevada Library Co-op. Um, this is just for things like sharing resources and interlibrary loan and things like that.
Okay, so it doesn't prohibit us from joining?
No, no, it's not related to that at all.
Okay. Okay, I'll move approval of the policy on cooperation.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve the policy on cooperation with other libraries and agencies. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that one carries. So that ends the policy updates for this meeting. And then, Amy, you'll bring back the two to the December meeting?
Yes, and then several more.
Right. Okay, then we'll move on to agenda item number 11 for possible action. Discussion and possible action to approve resolution 2020 R dash 001, which would remove the DCCA TV equipment use policy from the Douglas County Public Library policies.
So discussed at the last meeting that we would get rid of this policy on, um, the DCCA television. Um, there used to be, uh, Community Access Television, which is what the acronym stands for. And many, many, many years ago, we had all of that equipment as part of the library. Um, but then we did pass it along to the county, um, for their use. And then they have since, um, deactivated it and have disposed of it. So it's, it's a moot policy at this point, um, but we need this resolution to make it official that we're removing that policy. Did I say that right, Carrie? Carrie, help me with this one.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that, oh, go ahead, Mark.
This is Mark Jensen. I move that we approve the resolution as presented.
Heather?
I'll second it. Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution to remove the DCCA TV equipment use policy. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that one carries.
Um, since we're not he- here in person, um, I'll send the final copy of this to Kate for signature. And then Kate can return it and we can make it part of our record.
And, uh, the contract sheet also?
Yes, the contract as well, thank you for reminding me.
And can I just use these and submit them to you if I sign them?
Well, the resolution has draft on it, I think.
Okay.
So I have to remove that, but the contract, yes. Um, I'll take a look at that and see if you can sign the one you have.
Okay. Okay, we'll move on to agenda item number 12 for possible action. Discussion of possible action to adopt 2021 library holidays.
Okay, um, this is an annual thing at the November meetings. Um, we set the holidays for the coming year, uh, 2021. The, uh, middle column there is the Douglas County Official Holidays. Um, and so the library has the option and has often taken the option to add to or amend those holidays. Um, the library board has complete jurisdiction and control to do that. And, um, this year it was decided that we would close a little bit earlier, the day before Thanksgiving. Uh, and pretty soon we'll vote on Christmas as well. Uh, but for next year, I included that closing at 2:00 PM thing in case you wanted to do that next year.
Okay, Amy, uh, the, there is a policy or some places at the staff, how the staff handle this time off?
Yes, um, and this is something that, um, HR approves of as well. If there's an additional day that's not, uh, an official county holiday, they can change their schedule and work those hours at a different time during the same pay period. Or they can use their own leave time or comp time, um, in order to have that day off. We've never had a, an objection to that. The staff is usually very happy to have an extra day off.
Well, what about the time, the closing at 2:00 PM? What do we normally close, seven?
We know, well, yes, without a holiday, um, depending on the day of the week, yeah, we would close at seven or six. Um, but for these particular days, we normally close at five. And so they just come in a little early on that day in the past. Um, this year, uh, since we decided to close at 2:00, uh, tomorrow, the staff get, had the option of working extra hours, coming in early or, um, just using their own leave time or comp time. And if there's a question, we discussed this, I think, one other time. Um, the employees who are covered under the labor agreement in, um, the Douglas County Employees Association, they just have to be notified at least five days before we change their schedule. So this is in line with the requirements of that contract.
Okay. I move that we, um, approve an action to adopt the 2021 library holidays.
Second.
Who seconded?
Bonnie.
Bonnie, okay. Can we have a motion and a second to approve the 2021
They just did.
Library calendar for holidays?
They just
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, Amy, were you saying something?
No, never mind. Thank you.
Okay, agenda item 13 for possible action. Discussion and possible action on revisions to the library's mission statement.
Okay, uh, this is an item we discussed, uh, at the last meeting. Um, and on your, uh, attachment, I've listed the current mission, um, and then the revision that was discussed last month. There was a public comment about this particular agenda item, which I read at the beginning of the meeting.
I don't, this is Bonnie again. I don't remember exactly what the public comment said, but I think it was referenced where qualified staff is. And, and that's probably correct. That is to, the mission of the Douglas County Public is to provide a comprehensive collection services and and I, I, well, I don't know, you might read it again because it sounded as qualified staff may need to be, or the phrase qualified staff may need to be put someplace else.
Okay, the suggestion, um, from the patron, um, in public comment says, "The mission of the Douglas County Public Library is to provide a comprehensive collection of library materials, services and programs, comma, as well as qualified staff, comma, in order to meet the informational, educational, recreational, cultural needs of all residents of Douglas County." That's my note.
A good change.
Mm hmm. Yes, and I have an additional suggestion that we take out residents of Douglas County because we do serve everyone who walks in the door, regardless of where they live. Um, and we offer library cards to anyone in the state in, of Nevada. So I think that might be a little bit limiting to say residents of Douglas County. Um, we could say something like cultural needs of all who seek library service or, um, to all visitors or something like that. That's just my two cents.
I agree because some people have a second home up here. Hmm, you know, so they may not be considered a Douglas County resident.
Yeah, exactly.
Mm hmm. I think, I think because we are a county library and funded by the county, that we do need to say the residents, but we may add another phrase and, uh, all, I don't know.
All residents and visitors to our area or to the public library?
Yeah, it could say all residents and visitors of Douglas County.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Okay. Residents and visitors. Okay, what about the rest of the sentence or the rest of the mission statement? I mean, the revision that the board provided last month is, um, the one that says, "Have qualified staff provide a comprehensive collection." And the one public suggestion was, "Provide a comprehensive collection, et cetera, et cetera, as well as qualified staff."
I, this is Mark Jensen. I'll suggest that the support, support from qualified staff be listed as one of the things that the library provides.
Oh, okay. That's good, Mark.
I like that. So it would say, um, "The mission of the Douglas County Public Library is to have support
Provide a comprehensive
Oh, okay, sorry. Provide a comprehensive collection of library material services and blah, blah, blah. Um, with, with support of qualified with the, okay, just wanna make sure I got it right. With the support of qualified staff, okay?
Okay, so let me see if I had it correct. "The mission of the Douglas County Public Library is to provide a comprehensive collection of library materials, services and programs with the support of qualified staff in order to meet the informational, educational, recreational and cultural needs of residents and visitors to Douglas County."
Well, all residents of and visitors too. Mm hmm.
Okay. You could be a visitor of. You could say visitors and residents of Douglas County.
Say residents and visitors, put residents first.
Okay, residents and visitors of Douglas County.
Yeah.
Okay. So the part about, uh, with the support of qualified staff comes after the word programs. Is that correct, Mark? Mark?
He's muted.
The way, the way Kate phrased it was fine.
Okay. Just double checking. So do you want me to make these changes and bring them back again? Or just direct me to use this modified version?
I think we should just direct you to use the modified version.
Yes.
Well, whoever makes a motion, just be sure to include that.
I move that we accept the revisions to the library's mission statement. Does that sound okay? We need a second.
This is Mark Jensen. It seems such an important thing that maybe we should, it should be brought back, the final verbiage, so that everyone's on the same page.
That's fine, too.
Whatever.
Okay.
Okay, so Carrie, tell me, we had a motion. There was no second for it, so does Mark just make a motion now to bring it back?
It's at the pleasure of the board at this point. If there was a second for the pen, I mean, what we should go ahead and do is move forward with the pending motion. If there's no second, then it dies, and then Mark can make a motion. If there is a second, you all can vote on it. And so we'll just play it out and see what happens.
Okay, there was a motion to approve the submitted with the corrections. Does anyone want to second that? Okay, so that motion dies for a lack of a second. Did someone else want to make one?
I'd like, this is Mark Jensen. I'd like to move that the director make the corrections as suggested and bring final text back to the board for approval at a subsequent meeting.
And I'll second that. Okay, we have a motion and a second to change and edit the mission statement. Amy will bring that back to us at the December meeting for the final approval on that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that one carries.
Thank you.
Okay, agenda item number 14 for possible action, discussion to approve a two-year extension of the library's existing long-range plan.
This is something we've discussed at the last couple of meetings. And I believe last month we were leaning towards a two-year extension, but we decided to bring it back to this meeting, so the document I've provided is pretty much identical to what you've seen the last couple of months.
Amy, this is Bonnie. The question, it says the next 10 years. Do we want to say 10 years or two years?
Oh, well, sorry, that, thank you for pointing that out. That language was from the original plan.
Yeah.
And so this particular document is only for your reference. It's not part of the official plan. All we have to do is submit a statement to the state library with probably a copy of the minutes of this meeting when the decision is made, and notify them that the plan that they have on record is going to continue.
Okay. Well, I would make a motion that we approve the long-range plan for two years and notify the state library that our current plan will be continued. Does that make sense? I don't know.
It makes sense to me.
And that continues through December of 2022 then?
Correct.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, I'll make a second to that motion. Motion in a second to extend the long-range plan for two years through December of 2022 and notify the state library. All those in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, so that one carried. Agenda item number 15 for possible action, discussion and possible action to revise the library board bylaws.
The documents that you have are the original bylaws, which are still in effect, that were adopted in 2008. The one with the redline revisions on it was done last year by Doug Ritchie, working with Bonnie Rogers and former board member Lisa Foley.
Well, I'll take opportunity to speak of this. Actually, we worked during the year and we brought it back just before we were closed, so, but we worked with Cynthia and Gregory and Doug and on the revisions and how to present them to the board and also for inclusion. So it's been legally checked and modified and discussed, and we worked with the county, or excuse me, the state library and reviewed several other library board policies throughout the state and things. So this was our final recommendation.
I had on page five, it doesn't have a page number on it. But at the top it says, "Establish, supervise, and maintain a county library." The next line said, "Appoint, evaluate the performance, and if necessary, dismiss a librarian." Shouldn't that say director? Because you have children's librarians and stuff like that, which we have no authority.
Right, so you're absolutely right.
I put that in as a change too, because when I read that, it should be the library director.
And then the other one I had was in that same section, number N, or letter N. I thought that should be a policy instead of being included in the bylaws. And that's for each trustee to complete the training, because I also think that we should have some training with the HR department or with finance and other county entities since we're responsible for the tasks that were assigned. So like I said, I think that one should be placed under a policy rather than in the bylaws.
That's okay. I have a question on page one. Under appointment, number one. At the end it says, "In accordance with Nevada law, trustees," and then, "Should there be trustees applications are available from the county manager's office?" Then application wouldn't be capitalized. Do you see what I'm saying, Amy?
Oh, I do. I'm sorry. Yes, I was waiting to see if anybody else. Yeah, I think so, but yeah, I guess that would stand the test of time. I don't think it'll be done differently anytime soon, so.
Okay, that was just another question. Evan not looked at it for a while. But it says we will, we'll use library board as referring to the trustee, but you might want to go through these and, and select for a library board would use and where trustees is used. And because sometimes we use trustees and some we got time, we use library board, and I guess we just took it from the old one and put it in here, but some consistency between the use of trustees and the use of library board.
Okay, and which do you prefer, or which does the board prefer?
Well, I think sometimes trustee, trustees is appropriate, and sometimes library board is appropriate.
Okay.
You'd almost have to read it and see.
Right.
Trustees' application is appropriate. But when, when they're talking about the board responsibilities and actions, then library board is appropriate.
Yeah.
So I was trying to read that last night and things. And then one other thing. On, well, what am I? On page three. Item number, item under officers. Under number three. It says, "An officer shall serve a term from one year from the date of annual meeting, at which elected," I would just take out they are because it's, the officer is singular. And I tell, in the you know me, I'm fanatic about that. And so.
Anyway.
This is Mark Jensen. It seems, I have a question on item number through paragraph three under area six officers on page three about the limits on sir more than one term in the same office. I could see that could become problematic for someone who is serving another four years, for instance. So they can only be president or any other officer, and only one of those eight years might cause problems down the road.
Yeah. Well.
I don't think there should be any limits on the terms, on the number of terms a trustee holds in an office.
I'll just mention here for the new board members that this, I have not given my suggested revisions, but if you would like me to make suggestions, I can bring that to the next meeting.
I think the term of an officer should be limited because it, one, it gives each member or four members within their term a chance to serve in as chair or vice chair, or if we have other officers, but also we're not, we don't get locked in to how the, I don't know, I guess.
Well, then maybe put the word in their consecutive term. That you can serve a term and then somebody else does it. They can put you back to that position after you've had the year off.
Well, yeah, that's good. Yeah.
This is Mark Jensen. I disagree that if the board, the trustees, whoever they are at any point, are satisfied with the president of the board and they're doing a great job and everyone thinks they're doing a great job, then why not have them serve another term in that position?
Well, Mark, I'll go back to history. Because at one time, because we're a volunteer board, many people didn't want to serve in officers because they were gone and things. And, and so there were times that the president served for three years, and the board at that time decided, in the best interest of the library and every board member have an opportunity to, to be a president or a chair, whatever officer we have, that there be limits set. And so when we did the review and checked other county or other library policies and with the attorneys, we recommended they stay at one year. And I like Kate saying that then they wouldn't serve consecutive years, but they could serve after a while, so.
Well, Mark, I think your suggestion also brings into account the willingness. There may be board members who do not want to be a chair, but want to continue serving as a trustee. So I happen to agree with Mark on this one.
So another example, Bonnie, you're in your second four-year term, right, as a trustee? So if you've served one year as president already in the past, in this current terms that you're in, for all those eight years, you could only serve one year as president. And so that, and I'm saying that might raise problems with having people eligible to serve in that position.
In the second four years, I could serve. And then, but it's, it's not really been an issue. And
Well, I understand what you're saying. The phrase, the phrasing needs to be changed to a counter.
I've just noticed over the years, as, as we proceeded and sometimes, that it's better to make changes.
I agree that change is good, but we probably shouldn't lock things in too much.
I don't think we're locking things in. It's one year at a time, and then the next year we change and that's.
Well, Heather or Jill, do either of you have any discussion on this?
My only concern is if there's, like, let's say you're on for, for, for eight years. And there, how could you have, there might be a time when you have to run, be an officer a second time, because everybody else has already done it. So I think that's one of the concerns that I think Mark has.
Well, that would fit in if you put non-consecutive years.
I, I in the eight years. Yeah, I agree with you, Bonnie. I don't think that would be a problem if we put non-consecutive, that you couldn't be at consecutive years.
Mark Jensen, I agree with that as well, that it's just a matter of correcting the text in the draft revision to accommodate that for that kind of thing. I think that would be good that I would, it would be acceptable to me that there be, that officers not be consecutive, but they not be limited in the number of terms they can serve.
Correct. Yeah, correct.
Here's my two cents. I do not see a problem with having an officer be in two consecutive terms. You know, going back to what Mark said earlier, if someone's doing a great job, it's something they enjoy doing, they've gotten the hang of things, and life is good, then, you know, why not serve two consecutive terms? I understand we don't want to get into a reign of a, an officer where their, perhaps their style or who knows what, you know, is you know, is the order of the day, but I would keep it flexible personally. So I would not put in, you know, I would not make the requirement that the terms have to be non-consecutive. And I would not put in the requirement that you know, they should not be able to serve more than one term.
Again, I, I think, you know, we checked with several libraries across the state, their policies, and then again with the attorneys, and and they, you know, they agreed with, and most bylaws had that they didn't serve more than one. And also, when we went through the training was for the boards that, that was talked about. And, and I think if you include non-consecutive terms, they get, everybody gets a chance to at least do something, but we're not locked into two years of of a situation sometimes that we don't want to be in, because once they're elected, we can't do anything about it.
Mark Jensen, does there need to be a recall paragraph in the bylaws?
Well, that's a lot of work. If we just say they can only do one year and not be consecutive, then we don't have to worry about that. That causes a lot of conflict.
Well, I'll just interject here for a moment. We don't have to decide anything today. I think this is a really good discussion and, and everybody has made some valid points, but we can certainly discuss it again at future meetings. We don't have to make a final decision right now.
And I wanted to give Heather and Jill the opportunity to go over the changes and hear this discussion, because they weren't involved back in February when we had this and we thought we were going to get them approved then.
I appreciate, thank you.
Yeah.
I just want to say that, yeah.
So do we want to put this on the December agenda? Amy, you can bring back any suggestions you have also, and we can revisit it then?
That sounds good.
So Carrie, do we need to make a motion to table this till December?
That would probably be helpful.
Okay.
Well, I'll table the board of trustee bylaws to December.
I'll second that. Okay, we have a motion and a second to move the bylaws to December agenda, and Amy will bring us her suggestions at that time. All those in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Item 16 for discussion only, review of the expiring board terms.
This is just a quick item. We put this on every November. The county manager's office lets us know whose terms are expiring and what the reapplication deadlines are. And just yesterday, they opened up applications. And just yesterday, they opened up applications. The deadline is December 4th. Because Mark's term is ending, anyone can apply for that spot, including Mark. So if Mark would like to do another term, he has to fill out an application again and note to the commissioners that he would like to serve another four years. And likewise, anyone from the public who meets the requirements can also apply. And then the board makes their decisions either late December or early January for that position.
Amy, Mark Jensen, so it sounds like that when the county commission will consider that is finalized, that finalized, it's up in the air when they're going to put that up?
I could look it up, but I don't, I don't know of one right now. They used to do it the first meeting in January and then last year they started doing it in December. So I'm not sure. I'm assuming they're going to go with December again, but I don't know for sure. I just know the deadline.
So that's all.
Okay, then we'll move on to agenda item 17 for possible action, discussion and possible action to adopt a schedule of board meeting dates, times and locations for 2021.
I want to ask that that be deferred because the revision in the bylaws is that we would meet in July. So if we adopt the bylaws, unless we change that or we adopt the bylaws or something, then we might have to change the calendar. And I think this year, we, it's become evident, we need to have meetings during the summer.
So your motion is to table this?
My motion would be to table it until we finalize the bylaws and things that you affect this.
This is Mark Jensen. Do we have to approve the whole year today or is this just really at the discretion of, of our group?
No, we don't have to approve it all at once. You don't have to approve it at all. You can table it. You can also change when we meet at Lake Tahoe or the frequency of the meetings or whatever. It's all up for discussion. I use the format that we've done the last several years by meeting at Lake Tahoe in September, which is always a Thursday rather than a Tuesday, and then having no meetings in July or December since this year was the exception rather than the rule. But as I said, the board can change this however they like.
It might be beneficial to approve the first half of the year so that the various trustees can plan their lives.
I would, I would go along with that.
Me too.
That's okay.
Okay, so Bonnie had a motion to approve the, or to table it until December. Does anyone want to second that? With no second, that motion dies. So now we need a motion for Mark, however you want it to word it.
I move that the board approve the meeting schedule as presented for January through June and table approval of the remainder of the year to a subsequent meeting.
I second.
And we have a motion and a second to approve January through June and then revisit it after the bylaws are taken care of. So all those in favor? Aye.
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 Sorry. Well, I don't know if I'm allowed to say this now, but just to clarify, the meetings, January through June will all be either virtual or in Minden. Right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, any opposed? Okay, then that carries. Moving on to agenda item 18 for possible action, discussion and possible action to close the library branches at 2:00 PM on December 24th and 31st.
Those are the two Thursdays I mentioned earlier, Dave, the day before Christmas and the day before New Year's.
And I'll make a motion.
We approve those.
What, one, just one question. Does branch closure mean that staff go home early as well, or just that the branch closes?
The staff will go home early. This was Kate's agenda item. Sorry, Kate, I shouldn't answer for you.
No, that's fine.
Okay, any further discussion on that? Then I'll make the motion that those early closures happen for the holidays.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for the 2:00 PM closing on December 24th and 31st. All those in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Moving on to agenda item 19 for possible action, discussion of budget priorities and preparation for the fiscal year 2021, 2022 budget planning process.
Before we get started, I'll just remind the board that the CFO, Terry Willoughby, has informed me that we won't begin the budget process until January. I don't have any deadlines at this point, so no specific budget decisions need to be made today, but rather just a discussion of what our priorities should be. Well, that's lively. Well, from the last meeting when we met in October, the board talked about priorities like the bookmobile and outreach, collections of library materials and things like that. But we can also table this to another day since we don't really have any deadlines. Up to you.
I think we should probably table it or just postpone discussion until we can bring forth priorities. And if you have priorities you would recommend or each board member, your collections is mine and we talked about a building, but I'd like to see that in writing and just not put out so that we know, we need to know the budget process and what the requirements are so we can submit our priorities.
I agree.
So did you want to make a motion, Bonnie, on when to table this too?
Let's table the item, whatever it is.
19.
Number 19.
Yeah.
So do you want to discuss that in December or wait until January when I get more information?
I'd say till January.
I agree.
All right.
Okay, so there's a motion to table this item until January. Is there a second?
I second.
Okay. So motion and second to table this item until the January 2021 meeting. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Agenda item number 20 for discussion only, the library director's monthly report on library operations and statistical reports from staff.
Thank you. My monthly report is in your packet, of course. Lately, we've been getting some updates to our COVID response and the governor has held a couple of press conferences. And so we've had to quickly kind of shift a little bit, but luckily we haven't had to make too many changes. The governor just recently spoke on Sunday and said that libraries and similar places should open with only 25% capacity. We were already limiting the number of people to 10 at a time, which is below 25%. So I have, I have not increased that number. I've left it at 10 people. And many people feel that we're headed towards a shutdown and, and so that might occur. But for now, we're keeping all of our services in place, which is curbside service and browsing at both libraries with a limit of 10 patrons at a time. That does not include staff. The county manager also asked us to have as many people as possible work from home and to reduce the number of staff in the buildings to the smallest amount for functioning and keeping our services going. So we have staggered our schedules and moved some things around so that we don't have quite as many people in the building at one time. So that has been kind of the biggest thing going on. Our online programs, we have two, are going very well. We have virtual storytime on our Facebook page and both of our children's staff have done storytimes and they're very popular. Everybody gives us great feedback about those and they're a lot of fun. And then there's a teen program online. It's a gaming program. It's called Weekend Warriors. That's a program we used to have in person, but we've moved it online and the teens are really happy with it. And we even got one really, really nice comment from a mother of a teen who said that her son looked forward to that program every Saturday morning and it was his favorite part of the week. So I love hearing things like that. So that one is moving along very well as well. And then the only other thing is donations. I thought it would slow down by now, but they haven't. We get tons of donations every day. So we're still working on that. And then as for the staff, the new person we're hiring as a library technician has not started yet, and I don't have a start date from HR, but I anticipate getting that soon. We're just waiting on, you know, background checks and paperwork and so on. And let's see, Julia and Laura attended an online conference and that was the first of its kind for that organization. It's a, it's a, a part of ALA, but it's a new division. So that's pretty exciting stuff. And that's it, pretty much. So Julia, go ahead with your statistics.
All right, the statistics were submitted with the, the board packet. We have the current fiscal year as well as last fiscal year for comparison. Everything is really very consistent over, over last month and we're like, like we discussed last month, the total circulation numbers, the, the checked out items is really not that far below what we were seeing last year or in previous years. But our number of library visits is down. So we're having fewer people in the library, but with curbside, we're seeing people check out more items at a time. So our circulation is, is really, really good for our number of service hours currently. Oh, go ahead.
Oh, I just had a question. So when we talk about library visits, that does include curbside?
That does not include curbside. That is just the number of people that are physically coming into the building.
Oh, okay. And is that, is curbside the number of curbside encounters captured anywhere? Or?
Yes, it is. And if you'd like, I can add that on to this report. Each month I do have those numbers. So if you guys would like, I can.
That would be.
Because I'm, I see curbside not to go away.
Yeah, that's, yeah, it seems like it's going to be with us for at least another six months, you know, maybe. And so it would be helpful to get that knowledge and if it's ever needed again in planning, you know, we hope not, but yeah, it's done in years to come. So great.
You're welcome. So our, our curbside numbers, if you would like, in September and October, they were very consistent. We had 357 in Minden in September and 369 curbside pickup. So that's individual times that we ran out to people's vehicles to bring their items. That was in Minden. Up at the lake, we had 11 in September and four in October. The numbers at the lake are decreasing, but that's, that's kind of typical with, with the lake. It'll increase eventually when, when the weather gets nicer. We always see a decrease when the weather kind of gets colder. As far as e-checkouts, it did go down a little bit this month, but that is because of our transition from RV Digital to Overdrive. It was, October was the first full month that we had Overdrive and we did not have RV Digital. We are seeing those numbers go up on Overdrive with us purchasing new items on Overdrive and Libby as well. So that, those numbers should go back up to being as high as they were in September and since we have shut down. Also, the, the database sessions number is also very high. It's, it's staying very high. Those high numbers are the highest databases that were used this month were Heritage Quest, which is the genealogy database that we have. And then the second was one of our EBSCO products and that was Consumer Health Complete, which people can find health information on that. So pretty timely. I think that that one is increasing in usage right now. If anybody else has questions, that's all I have for the stats.
And I just have to say, I love the Libby app. It is so much easier to use.
Yeah.
And I got the brand new Mary Higgins Clark book already.
Yes, it's great. The Libby app is fabulous and we're getting really good feedback from patrons on that.
Okay, then we'll move on to agenda item number 21, closing public comments. At this time, public comment will be taken on items that are within the jurisdiction and control of the Library Board of Trustees. Any written public comment received after 4:00 PM the day before the Library Board meeting will be compiled and added as supplemented, supplemental materials to the county's website and distributed to the Library Board of Trustees within 24 hours after the meeting. To make public comment during the meeting, the public must call 775-783-6024 and leave a voice message, which will be played for the Library Board of Trustees and the public. Public comment is open at 12:08.
Veronica, have any come in during the meeting?
No, no public comments have come in during the meeting.
Can I make a public comment?
Yes.
I just want to say what an excellent job you're doing, Amy, especially with COVID and everything else that's been going on. You've just been exemplary. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Julia, great job too.
They're all great. The staff is amazing. They should get all the credit.
When is our next meeting? 15?
I believe it's December 8th for the investigation at 10:00 and then December 15th will be a regular meeting. Well, I mean, it's considered special because it wasn't on the schedule, but it'll be a routine meeting, I should say.
Will they both be by soon?
Yes.
So this is Veronica. There was a comment that came in through our public email. I'm assuming it's appropriate for this. Should I go ahead and read it?
Carrie, that's for you.
It is certainly acceptable if you wanted to read it, but if you did not, you could include it in the supplemental materials after the fact. It's up to you.
Okay. Which would the board prefer? Would you like me to read it and provide a supplemental or just provide a supplemental?
I would like for you to read it. So the people listening hear the public comments also.
Okay. This is from Mike Esperaza or Mike Esparza. He's with All Cal Insurance. He says, "Hi, Bonnie. I have always appreciated working with such great people in the community and this year my appreciation has become even more apparent as I notice how nonprofit organizations and great small business leaders have stepped in to lift up their communities and great small business leaders have stepped in to lift up their communities during this pandemic. We had out, we at All Cal Insurance Agency want to express our gratitude to you for all that you do to make the community a better place for everyone. Thanks, Mike Esparsa.
That's a surprise.
Okay, it's 12:13. Were there any more public comments, Veronica?
No, there were no further public comments.
Okay, then public comment will be closed and we can adjourn this meeting.
Thank you, Kate.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanksgiving, thanks.